Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Gilliard here. Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Councilmember Gunn.
Present.
Councilmember Ral. Do you have a call?
Let the record reflect that Ms. Gilliard is here. Okay? All right, Madam President.
First item on the agenda is a presentation by Ms. Kaye Sibilla with AARP.
Hello.
Is she here?
Yes.
Oh, they have it? Is this where I stand?
Yes, ma'am.
This is my first time, so bear with me. I brought... I brought some information with me. Can I bring it up there?
Ah, Mr. Plaza.
She has some information.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
How are you?
Good.
Thank you so much for having me and inviting me on the Hartman AARP. My name is Kaye Sibilla, and I'm the Associate State Director for AARP Georgia, and I'm the Community Outreach Person for Metro Atlanta. So I'm your person in Metro Atlanta. Forgive me, I'm just calming down from driving from Midtown to get here. It's, uh, it's very entertaining. So, um, how many of you, show of hands, don't be shy, know who AARP is? And you have... You're a member of AARP. It's all right.
I'm too young.
Fifty... I'm just, I just want you to see how good fifty looks right now. What you have...
I got a card with a little more money.
Okay. This is what you have to look forward to. The fifty-plus club is looking really good. And I'm gonna talk to you about our Livable Communities Initiative. AARP National has partnered with the World Health Organization. And before I get into it, how many, how much time do we have? Is it the eight minutes? Nine, ten minutes? Okay. All right. We can do this. We can do this. So, AARP has partnered with the World Health Organization. We launched this Age Friendly and Livable Communities Initiative about five years ago. And so far, we have four states. Georgia is working towards in becoming an age-friendly and livable state. We have close to 400 communities and counties and one territory. And that is Virgin, uh, the U.S. Virgin Islands. So, AARP is in every state of the Union, including the three territories, District of Columbia, Virgin Islands, and Puerto Rico. And so today, I'm here to talk to you about how we would love the city of South Fulton to join this network. So far, in Georgia, we have six age-friendly communities, livable communities. Last month, Athens Clark joined us. Atlander and Atlanta and Augusta came in at 2014. And Macon Bib, by the way, Macon Bib, believe it or not, was the first age-friendly community in the nation. So, Macon Bib, our own, was the first in the country, which is huge. And then last year, Tucker and New Cross joined. I don't need to tell you that we're aging as a nation. Asia is far ahead of us, Japan and China, because they're one of the most populous places in the country. But we're aging, and AARP is working with our community leaders, our elected leaders, to prepare for it. Believe it or not, every day, 10,000 people turn 65. 10,000 people. So what we're doing is we're working with our communities to prepare for it, because we need to prepare for it. As we're living longer, a lot of us are active in our communities or are entrepreneurs. Most people think of entrepreneurs as the millennial group, but the secret is out. The highest demographic of entrepreneurs are the 50-something. So I'm gonna skip through this. So when we talk about age-friendly, we're not talking about old people. I just wanna make that clear. When we're talking about age-friendly and a livable community, we're really talking about inclusion and diversity. We wanna make sure that people that are in our communities, for instance, for the sidewalks, that, you know, a five-year-old, a 15-year-old, a person in a wheelchair, a person with a cane, family with a dog, that people can walk through the streets and they're safe. And now we're having to share the streets with folks that are biking to work or for leisure and also their newest friends, these scooters. You all prepared for the scooters?
No. Not at all.
Come visit us in Midtown, you'll see what that's like sharing the road. So when we talk about livable communities, there are eight really main areas that we deem as livable. And this is global. So transportation is huge. We need to have a transit system and multiple ways to get around and save for everyone, including those that have physical disabilities. Housing is another one. Social participation, respect and social inclusion, civic participation and employment. Remember, I told you about entrepreneurs, the 50-plus are the leading group of entrepreneurs now, not your millennials. And if you think about it, the millennials are asking who? Their parents and grandparents to be their first investors. Communications and information, huge. And community support and health services, and of course, outdoor spaces and buildings. So I'm gonna quickly go through the slides and bear with me. If you have a question, you know, just ask. Talked about outdoor spaces. It's really important that we have and plan for outdoor spaces. And I know that you're thinking of that. So as you're thinking of that, think of them being accessible to everyone so that, you know, there are benches along the way for anybody to sit and enjoy their time in the park or in these pool parks now that are being established for walking trails. Transit is huge. I wish there was a motor stop here. I could've taken the motor from Midtown.
There is one.
I would've been here in like, I don't know, 10 minutes. That's something to think about. Social, uh, I think that was where, housing. Social participation. I know you do that well here in South Fulton, making sure that our, not only just the 50-plus population, but everybody of all ages are interacting, the intergenerational activities, whether it's fun, educational, et cetera. There's a lot for people to do. Housing, making sure that we're planning for housing. Not everybody has a 2.5, whatever that means, family. So people need to have options for different types of housing, like tiny homes or cottages. That way, excuse me, they can age in place. My voice. Sorry. Respect and social inclusion. I think I talked about this greatly, about, you know, having multicultural and intergenerational activities. That's really important. Not only for our folks that are aging in place, but also for our children. It's important that they see us in the community, interacting in various capacities. Civic participation. I'm glad to see that there are 50-plus folks here at this meeting that are engaged, and they're engaged whether they're volunteering or they're doing their fifth act in career, which is wonderful, because we need that. Community support and health services. It's important that we have those types of services so people don't have to travel too far to get them. And there is multiple ways to get there, whether it's rideshare or public transit, or they're in a community where people can, you know, be there for each other. So, every, every city that joins the Livable Communities Network goes through a formalized process. It's not tedious or long. All you have to do is fill out a membership application and a letter from the mayor with committing to the city being part of this affiliate, not only within the U.S., but also being part of the World Health. It's very easy. I'm happy to sit down with your designated to go through it. And each city has a livability index number. Think of this as, oh, thank you. Think of this as, when you think of the, I think it's Money Magazine or Forbes list, you know, they have a top 10 universities or cities. The livability index is for us, how we measure. And we measure based on those eight areas of, of, um, eight, uh, eight levels of livability, the domains. How do you stack against the city that's comparable to you in terms of transportation? Cities that are really high up in transportation are cities like New York, where, you know, you don't need a car to live there. But in some cities, you need to have a car or you need to have mass transit. The process to join our livability village is in front of you. I think you guys have copies of my slide, but it's not that complicated. And the best thing is that it's free. So my information is at the end of the slide, and I do have cards in the packets that I've given out. I'm really grateful for your time, and I don't wanna take any more. So thank you so much for inviting me, Councilwoman Gilliard. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We'll take the question before Madam President.
Question?
Councilmember Gilliard, please.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I see you too. Thank you, Mr. Gator.
So in order to jo... You said to join is free?
It is free, yes.
So after we join, what, what does the organization?
So, which is my next slide. Thank you, Lloyd. The Roads of Livability Series. We have lots of resources to help our communities. And what I like to tell the community is that you all are already doing this. It's just that we're here to help you kind of think of it with this lens of a partner with you in all things livable. So when we have workshops on caregiving or transit, we're bringing in that voice. We're not just bringing in the voice of people that are 50-plus. We're bringing in that, all ages. Because I know that you have what you have to do, but we're there to sort of remind you to think of, to think of everybody, from the babies to, to our centenets. It's not a big deal to be 100 anymore.
So do you all do workshops?
We do workshops. We do workshops on financial resilience. Another word for that is financial literacy. We do workshops on caregiving. You know, it's just, if you're sick, it doesn't matter how old you are. But for those that are adults, it's very complicated because they have a financial life. So if you're a caregiver, we do workshops on that. We do workshops on fraud. You know, doesn't matter whether you're alive or dead. Somebody can take your identity and run with it and destroy that. And we do that with the help of our volunteers and partners.
Okay, so because if we become a part of this network, do we want an AARP event? Or do we want an AARP representative to be present at any of our community events? Are you saying that that's something that we will be a part of this network?
Yes, we would work with you on that. And we, AARP is not only a nonprofit and lobbying, nonpartisan organization, but we're a membership organization. We're also a volunteer organization. So in order for us to do that, I, I know that we have AARP members in your community, and we would be working with them, along with you, to address some of these things, whether it's housing or transit or caregiving. We would be working alongside them with you.
Okay, one last thing. What I would love to see with AARP, if you all could give us like a comprehensive listing of all discounts that people who are members of AARP... No, because I'm asking, I'm saying this because a lot of people who have AARP, they don't know
Right.
what benefits are available, for traveling, or insurance, or a lot of things. So if you can give us a comp... If we can have some type of pamphlet or something, and even an electronic link, because everybody doesn't electronic...
Right, not everybody is...
Right. Or something that we, when we have community meetings that we can give our seniors, that would be very helpful.
So I, in my, in the packet that I had the gentleman help distribute, there is our member benefits book in there.
Okay.
And it's blue. Yeah, if you open that, I don't have...
Okay, I got it. I have it. I have it.
Yep, it looks like this.
Okay.
And it's broken up in just what you were asking, in category. Travel, shopping, finance, home and technology.
So if you can get us, once we become a part of your network, if you can get us...
Oh, you don't have to join the, the network. I'm happy to get this to you anytime.
Okay.
Yeah. And for those who are not 50-plus, I just wanna say that you don't need to wait till you're 50 to join AARP. If you're old enough to vote, you can be an AARP member. So we are in the business of demystifying aging. We don't want people to be afraid to be 50 or age, because it's a blessing. So, you know, so join us. It doesn't matter how old you are, as long as you can vote.
And you also tell people if they have a spouse that's 50 and you're not, they assume you're the spouse.
And then you, you're benefiting from your spouse's discounts. You know, I mean, just figure out how you wanna play the, this, that, the, how you wanna benefit. That's, we're happy. We're here to be of service and would love for you to
I see my friend.
to work with you. We're already partnering with you indirectly. We just wanna formalize.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. President, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam President.
Next item on the agenda is Police Department would like to hear a presentation on Bearcat vehicle.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to present tonight for your consideration a Bearcat vehicle. Essentially, what happens right now is that the SWAT unit is going out on armed gun calls, and we don't have the ability to have armed vehicles go into those situations. So we're asking you all to consider the purchase of the Bearcat armed vehicle. This vehicle is known throughout the SWAT community as a standard vehicle for SWAT utilization. We also want to make sure that we're putting the proper protocols and policies in place as it relates to the utilization of this vehicle. This right here is a picture of the Bearcat. Certainly, we'll be, you know, purchasing that. We don't wanna use it in such a way that we're coming across as an occupying force in the community, but we also wanna make sure that we're giving our police officers the equipment that they need to go into those sort of situations. The Bearcat is a recognized platform. It has capacity to put about 10 to 12 fully armed SWAT officers in that vehicle. It also has an open floor plan so that if we have somebody wounded who will be going into that situation and remove them out. As I said earlier, it's a standard vehicle that's used in SWAT operations. And at this point, we don't have one. I took a look at some of the cases where we would use this Bearcat. And right now, we have about 66 narcotics locations that we've got complaints from. Get around the city, and I'm sure there's more than that. But right now, I've got complaints from you all, from citizens alike. So we've kinda added that to a list, and we started a investigation into those. And these are all scenarios where we would use this Bearcat. We're right now tracking 196 gangs, not in the city of South Fulton, but throughout the Atlanta metropolitan area. We've been working with a lot of gangs. We've been working with U.S. Marshals and the National Patrol to increase our intelligence as it relates to them. I know most of you are aware that we just did a search warrant on a couple of businesses along Old National. Just to give you a sense of what we're kinda confronted with, we were able to buy a couple of machine guns out of one of those businesses. So obviously, having this capacity we do for our officers, it would be a great thing for our officers. And we've had six armed gun situations, and we executed about 53 search warrants in 2018. Up until then. And looking at how we would purchase this particular vehicle, we got with finance, and we spoke with them about some salary savings that we've had over the course of the year. We did a complete analysis of our salary savings and our liabilities and our known expenditure moving forward into FY '20. And the finance department have given us permission to actually use $40,000 from the $2.3 million we had in salary savings to purchase this vehicle. And so right now, we feel that we're in a good space to purchase this much-needed equipment.
So you have great statistics, don't you? Where, where would you have sent this vehicle in the past two years?
Well, anytime we get ready to execute a search warrant. Obviously, we wanna go and use those at most narcotics locations. And some of the situations we've seized, and I think I showed you our pictures, where we seized seven, eight, nine handguns out of some of the drug locations that we've gone into. So in most of those locations is where we would take this Bearcat, especially because this vehicle has the ability to pull burger bars off doors, has the ability to protect our personnel as we're going into those situations. So we wanna make sure that they have those sort of tools when they're going into narcotic locations.
I just have to say personally, I'm not interested in seeing a vehicle like that in my neighborhood. I'm not into that yet, okay? Let me say this. I had the unfortunate experience of going through my cousin's house, and three doors down from my cousin's house was a hostage situation.
Right.
And I was stuck in that situation at the beginning of the morning, maybe a little later, because it was all forces toward everywhere. But the thing that struck me more than anything else is that SWAT was called. And so when SWAT was called, they were called in their cars. The SWAT equipment was in the trunk. They opened the trunk, put the SWAT equipment on, and got together in my cousin's yard to line themselves up to go and attack this situation. We owe our police department that. And when I was in Fulton County, we had a Bearcat. And I can tell you this, Mr. Bultley, we used to go to the home association and drive it down the street. And people applauded it just to see it here. And the difference between this one, the one we had, had a gun turret on top of it. And so it's a great thing. It helps our community, but it helps make sure that our guys go home safe when they're called out to do a deadly and hazardous job. So I appreciate the fact that you look into it, and I would hope that this body will go through.
Councilwoman Cootie, can I share a story with you?
Absolutely.
Back in the late eighties, I was a young homicide sergeant. I was called out to a scene where an officer of a ball shooting had taken place. There was a gentleman by the name of Gregory Lawler, who had pulled out an assault rifle and shot two police officers. When we arrived on scene, Gregory Lawler was still staged up inside of his townhouse up in Buckhead. When we got there, every time a police officer tried to get next to one of the police officers that was lying in the street, Gregory Lawler would fire off a ramp. And so at that time, in the late eighties, we didn't have the capacity at APD to even go and pull that police officer out of the street. And so I understand the optics of it, but we actually, in that case, had to call a Brink's truck to come there so that we can go and pull that police officer out of the street. And like I said, I understand the optics of the vehicle and the way that it looks. It looks like you would be coming across as an occupying force in the community. But at the end of the day, our policies would dictate how that, how that equipment is going to be used. And I assure you, we won't miss using that equipment.
Their response, I would say, I'm not just concerned about what it looks like. I'm also concerned about like how we spend our resources. So like on one of those slides, you said we had like 96 drug houses or, you know, why do we have, if we know that they're there, right? Like, why are the owners allowed to either rent out or, you know, hold that property? I, I would like to see us move more towards crime prevention rather than just crime response. Like, I wonder how many youth programs we could sponsor with that $300,000 to stop the gang activity? Like, I, I just want us to move from a place where we're not just responding to crime, but we're actively working across all of our departments to prevent crime. And, and there is a, there is a famous study by Mr. Gary S. Becker at the University of Chicago. It's been replicated over 200 times. And what it has shown is that the greatest predictor of crime is income inequality. And so I think that we need to be focused on economic development and procuring resources and developing the people who live in our city. And I just want us to get as efficient at that as we are at policing. I think we're doing a great job of policing, so this isn't anything towards you. I just want us to do a better job at creating opportunities for people.
Well, I think we should take a comprehensive approach to attacking crime. I think we should be proactive. I think we should be reactive. And I also think we should send our officers out to be equipped to do the job. One of the ways to minimize Bearcats is to, is to get the drug dealers out of our city. Then we won't have to worry about Bearcats coming through our neighborhood. It is what it is. We didn't ask for the crime. It's here. The region had a Bearcat before we transitioned. When we transitioned, Fulton County decided to keep the Bearcat. This is about safety of our police officers to do the job that's required of them to do. We asked, we said that public safety was going to be priority. So we need to give our officers whatever they need to do their job. Economic development. Ms. Councilmember Ral can tell you, we're in an academy right now with economic development. The two factors to improve our economic development is gonna be improving our school system and improving our crime. Yes, we do need to have programs. We do need to have better jobs in the area. But we also have to deal with the issues that we already have here. And I'm tired of people feeling like if they wanna commit a crime, they can come to Fulton County, specifically City of South Fulton.
Okay, and just to refresh my memory again, how much is one of these trucks cost?
I'm sorry, it's right at $400,000.
And you just need one, correct?
Just one.
So, and you said that there's a $400,000 cost savings on salaries?
That's $2.3 million in salary savings.
So that you all have saved
Yes.
from not hiring additional officers or just...
As we went over the course of the year, we were hiring police officers, but you know, there's a catch-up part of that. If you don't hire all of your police officers right at the beginning of that budget cycle, you're gonna start realizing savings at, at that point. And so we hired 52 police officers from August of 2018 up to today. And I think, I came before the body this time last year, and I think you all asked me why I didn't ask for more police officers. And I said, well, I want a budget to a number that I can realistically hire over the course of a year, so that we can be good stewards of that money. And so hiring 52, I, I think I said then that the most I had ever hired was 41. Now it's 52. And so with the direction that we've gone in with our salaries and so forth, just the other day, we had 42. other day, we had forty people show up for our physical agility tests. And those were from other surrounding jurisdictions. And so we expect that with the new salaries that are coming in place, we'll be able to recruit at a much faster rate as we move forward.
And based off of this four hundred thousand dollar cost savings, you didn't think of any other things you may need, like more equipment other than this big item?
We did. We, as we were going through budget deliberations for FY twenty, there were certainly a lot of discussions that we've had with respects to radios and other equipment needs that we had moving forward. Certainly, those are the sort of things, even that until the E-911 center as we move forward, things that we'll need to start getting ready to move ourselves to that space.
I'm trying to go back to the map. So this sixty-six narcotics investigations, where along? Is that all over throughout the city?
So if you look, I literally just, today I got the, an update from Georgia Tech on our BEAT redesign study. They've gone through the first iteration of the BEAT design. And if you look at the southern, the southeast portion of that map, that's where a bulk of our E-911 calls are coming in, and consequently, that's along the Old National Corridor. That's where a majority of our narcotics investigations up to, including a GAVI rotor taking place right now. And so if you literally were able to see that map that I just got from Georgia Tech, that they would make a great deal of sense based on the amount of 911 calls that we receive and where those drug and gang locations are as well.
All right, and pardon my ignorance, like, in what situation would you use this? Because this kind of, it frightens me a little bit as well, based on the look of it.
Right.
Like, where would, what type of situation are we going in?
Anytime you go to an armed gunning situation, you're going to take something like that. Anytime you go to execute a search warrant at different drug houses, you're going to take equipment like that. When we're engaging at different gang locations, you certainly want to make sure, because we get the calls, people just say, they're hearing shots fired at some such a place. Well, you don't want to ride up on situations like that. We have a group of individuals shooting handguns and not have the ability to go with an armored vehicle under those circumstances. And so there are quite a few that I can think of over the course of the year, and I'm sure I'm forgetting some, but I trust me when I say that vehicle will get great use. What we won't do is misuse that vehicle or use it for, as a source of intenivation. And the same thing goes with our K-9 units. I mean, we don't, the K-9s aren't out there to scare people. They're out there for very specific purposes.
And where would this be housed? Where would it be?
It will actually be housed at our new facility. In the short term, we suspect it will stay up on Cassie, because that's where a majority of our...
And it's behind a fence?
Yes, it will.
Because I don't want to see this one too. Okay, that's...
Chief, I just wanted, wanted that you could remind us of your amount of seizure money up to date right now?
So far, we're close to eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, but that's a combination of drug seizures along with, drug seizures along with cars, jewelry, and things of that nature. But the total value is close to eight hundred and seventy-six thousand.
So that's the total amount that we're able to keep from this stuff that was escaped?
Right.
So outside of that, how much of that is cash?
Right now, I think we have two hundred and six thousand in cash. We have a majority of the cash in our custody. We cannot show it as an asset that we can spend until the courts release it. So a majority of those monies are in our custody, but if you look at our state and federal RICO funds, right now, it totals to, close to two hundred and some odd thousand, somewhere there. We just sold a Lamborghini for three hundred to forty-five thousand, and we're expecting a check from the DEA for, I think it's like a hundred and nine, or something like that.
And you've done accounts on this actual...
Lenco makes the Bearcat. There are, there are other armored vehicles out there, most for military use. There are very few specifically for law enforcement use. And so widely throughout the United States, the Bearcat, the Lenco Bearcat is the one that's used for law enforcement.
And Fulton County currently has one right now?
They do.
Do we ever use theirs in our situations, how we work in with the departments? And also are there other nearby municipalities who are actually out there?
Atlanta has one, Fulton County has one, Sandy Springs, I believe, has one, I'm thinking Doraville or Dunwoody. But don't quote me on that one. I'm pretty certain that it's a majority, a majority of the cities our size are larger have one.
As far as Fulton County?
As far as Fulton County's. Right now, if you're going to use somebody else's equipment, and I discussed this with the mayor earlier this week, it's important that you train with that other entity. Certainly, we made that offer to Fulton County, and we haven't received a favorable response at this point. We're currently training with the Fulton County schools. They have a SWAT unit, and so we've kind of created a force multiplier with them. So whenever we have these scenarios, not only are we responding, they're responding as well. And that's been in every one of the armed gunning situations that we've had so far.
And I'm sorry, I'm just, they don't have one, right?
They don't. But if a situation happened at a school where they had an active shooter, we would respond in tandem with them because of that partnership and that understanding that we have with Fulton County schools.
Ms. Gilliard?
Chief, so you have the idea that it costs four hundred thousand, and that you had savings saved?
Yes.
So right now, we have a draft budget. It's not final, but it is a draft. And so in order to fund it, we would have to decrease somebody else's budget by four hundred thousand dollars, because once there is the savings, it goes into a pot, and then that pot is used to distribute, you know, throughout the city. So that would be a little bit complicated at this point to go and find it. We would have to come out of some other minds. I just wanted to say that, that it's not as simplistic as, you know, we had two million dollar savings, and of that savings, we'd like to spend four hundred thousand, because probably other parts of the city would choose. And so I just, even if we were to say, well, this is really a good idea, we want to do it, we'd have to take another look at the entire budget and what we can do with it. So I just wanted to say.
Okay, Ms. Jackson?
The monies that you confiscated, I just turned it off. The monies that confiscated, is there, I know you, as far as equipment, it has to be used in our public safety, but my question is, is there a way that we can kind of divert some of the funding to educational pieces for young people, for our children, like different workshops, seminars, on crime, that type of thing?
There's a specific law in assets and forfeiture, it's called supplanting, where you can't take funds and use them towards things that should come under the regular general fund. Educational pieces for children, I don't.
I'm saying based on crime, because we know we have a gang issue. We have, you know, problems as far as young people, so there's no way that we could...
That's something that I'll have to actually research. The truth is, I don't really answer that question. I have to actually look into it.
Could it go into the past?
Tracy actually managed all of the assets forfeiture money from me in Atlanta, and she's done it here, and she's part too, so she's actually the expert on it.
I would say also that we can keep our comments toward the Bearcat. We'll come back to that.
To answer your question, Councilmember Jackson, you know, we cannot use those funds for that specific purpose. And I know what you're saying, that's that gray area that the federal folks kind of shine on, so we cannot use those funds for that specific area. Now, for the education of the officers, of those things strictly related to enhancing law enforcement and their ability to do their job as police officers, we can use it as far as that's concerned, but not for those kinds of actions.
Ms. Rose?
Thank you towards funding, Ms. Tracy. I was going to, I actually have been advocating on a, on a federal level, request for our congressmen not to do legislation to take away asset forfeitures, because that is one of the things they are looking to do, and one of the things that was said is that asset forfeitures have specific uses, and they cannot be used to pay for anything that a general fund would typically pay for. And she just answers your question as far as trying, I don't research that myself, but I, I do, I do want an accounting of the asset forfeitures and then how it's expended, and that I have not gotten, but let's keep it specific to Bearcat. Again, this is something that our region needs. I'm glad Pro Tem Baker asked that question as far as the school is concerned, active shootings is on the rise, and I do not want us to be in a reactive mode when it comes to us responding to situations. Yes, there is, we did have one in the region, in this area, but once we transitioned, Fulton County did take the Bearcat. So we do need, we're the fifth largest city in Georgia, third in Fulton County, we do need our own.
Okay, let me say that during the time of the administration, there was a Bearcat. And we really wanted to get the Bearcat from Fulton County, but those negotiations broke down. But I also want to hear what Chief said when he came up to this microphone, that he bought two machine guns, I mean, in Old National Corridor. Those same two machine guns could have been directed at some officers, some SWAT member who did not have the protection of a Bearcat, ought to get the way he wanted to go. We are about to be able to make sure that we have good public safety, but we're also about to be making sure that those who strap those guns on every morning, kiss their wives and chew their back, that they come home at night. This is what it takes for us to do that, I'm for it a hundred percent. I told you, I've seen it happen in my homes with my own eyes in a hostage situation, and it's quite embarrassing to see our SWAT people come up in a car and to get ready to do what they have to do. Now, I'll leave it with this, my biggest fear in public safety is that somebody's got a bigger gun than we got. They got it now. Somebody, we're going to be outnumbered, we're going to be outgunned. So we need to make sure that our officers get as much protection as we can. Thank you, Chief, for making this work.
Thanks so much, Chief.
Next item is South Fulton Comprehensive Transportation Plan status update by Modern Mobility Partners.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Tonight, we're going to have an update on MMP to the regards to the South Fulton Comprehensive Transportation Plan that's been administered by the Atlanta Regional Commission. I want to introduce Ms. Kennedy and Ms. Kemp that will be doing the presentation for you all.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good to see you. Inga Kennedy with the Southern Fulton Comprehensive Transportation Plan for all of the cities in the south part of the county. Tonight's presentation gives you an update of what's happening with the project and what you can expect. The presentation was made to the South Fulton Municipal Association back in May, and the mayor and a couple of council members were in attendance as well. The presentation was presented at our stakeholder committee around the same time, and some of you were there as well. And so the purpose tonight is to make sure that everyone has a chance to learn more about the process and to answer any questions that you may have. And I'll turn it over to Kelly Kemp, who's our project manager from Modern Mobility Partners. You all met her as well.
Thank you, Inga. Which way do I point? This way? Again, my name is Kelly Kemp. I'm with Modern Mobility Partners. I'm going to try to breeze through this, because I see the clock ticking down. So we have PEQ Inga on our team, as well as ACOM and Arcadis. And so tonight, what we're going to do is going to give you an overview of what the Southern Fulton Comprehensive Transportation Plan is, our engagement that we have coming up, both digital and in person, the vision, goals, and objectives, and project prioritization process that we're going through right now, and what our next steps are. So this is our study area. Inga mentioned that it's all eight cities within Southern Fulton County, as well as unincorporated Fulton County. We are scoped to do several things, but essentially, and I'm not going to go over all of this, but we have a robust engagement process that I'll go through. We have an inventory analysis that we're wrapping up right now, as well as an assessment of the short and long range needs focusing on transportation in the area. And we'll be doing some detailed corridor analyses, and then coming up with a fiscally constrained project list for the next five to ten years. So the study is centered around four milestones. The vision, goals, and objectives, and the existing conditions and project prioritization framework, so that's what we're working on right now, followed by the short and long range needs and the preliminary recommendations. This is our high-level milestone schedule. We started back in February of this year. Currently, here in August, we are wrapping up Task Three, the inventory analysis, and getting into the assessment. We've had a couple of project management team meetings, a stakeholder committee meeting, and we're going to be having another round of those shortly, and I'll get more into those. And we're wrapping up the study in July of next year, and in the spring, as well, we'll come back with preliminary recommendations to give you feedback. This just gives a brief update of where we've been. Back in March, we ramped up, got started, and started collecting data, putting together our engagement strategy, followed by beginning our inventory analysis and beginning to refine our vision and inventory, and continuing with starting city council meetings. So we started meeting, doing these presentations with the different city councils back in June. We're glad to be here tonight, and again, we'll be returning in the spring of next year. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the Eritropolis Freight Cluster Plan that we're also a part of, as part of a separate study. We don't want to duplicate any efforts and make sure we leverage those opportunities, so we're going to take the information from the freight cluster plan and incorporate it into our study and build off of that. So we just want to be good stewards of everyone's funds, and so make sure we piggyback off of that. So I mentioned the outreach strategy that Inga here is leading. We have the project management team, which includes a member from the City of South Fulton, as well as multiple members on the stakeholder committee that we'll get to shortly. But everything goes through the PMT and the stakeholder committees before it goes out to the public. We will be getting into our first round of public meetings soon, bring that up shortly. We also have some roving outreach going on. Inga and her team were at the National Night Out back on the sixth, which was a big hit. We got a lot of feedback from citizens there, and we've also launched an online survey, as well as had hard copies at that event, as well as others, and I think we had about forty-two percent responses there, so that was successful. And as part of that effort, we're asking folks what's important to them and what they value when it comes to prioritizing projects for the transportation system. And then, again, we mentioned we'll be back in the spring. We will also be doing a bus tour. We had a charrette, or an abbreviated version of a charrette, at the South Fulton Municipal Association, several of you were at a couple of months ago that Inga mentioned. The project management team includes representatives from all eight cities, as well as Fulton County, the Land Regional Commission, the three CIDs, the GDOT, and the stakeholder committee includes those entities, as well as MARTA, the airport. We invited, you know, Uber, railroads, we've got the school systems, chambers, beautification. We try to have a cross-cutting representation. So for the City of South Fulton, we have RISAN. Um, so for the city of South Fulton, we have Risan, yes, there is, um, who represents the PMT and the stakeholder committee, but I'll add that we have several other representatives representing city of South Fulton, um, also on the stakeholder committee. I think there's about five or six folks, um, in total, actually you're one of them, Councilwoman. Um, and so, uh, we'll be meeting up with that committee soon. Um, I mentioned we're gonna be having, uh, our first round of public meetings in September. Uh, so we're getting those finalized on the schedules now, so you'll be hearing about those soon. We are gonna do a bus tour, probably mid to late October, uh, taking the feedback that we receive from the public as well as our existing conditions analysis and taking folks out and really seeing firsthand what some of the issues and opportunities are. And I mentioned the roving outreach that's ongoing. We also have, um, a project website, southofultcp.org that is up and running as well as a project email and we are on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. And as I mentioned earlier, we have an online survey, uh, going on right now and we actually just extended it to about the nineteenth to give folks a little more time to respond after starting back with schools and stuff. Vision, goals and objectives, this is just the vision from the last CTP that was done in twenty thirteen. Uh, we are in the process of refining that now based on the feedback that we've been receiving from the project management team, the stakeholder, stakeholder committee and the mayor's charrette, um, as well as from the general public through the online survey. Uh, there's also goals and objectives. These are from the last CTP, we're updating those as well. Uh, but what we did establish was eight categories to prioritize projects based on feedback from the PMT, the stakeholder committee and the mayor's charrette. So I'm gonna go through those very quickly, uh, and I know we're short on time. Safety, uh, so we're looking at higher crash locations, bike pedestrian locations that may be high risk, proximity to schools and EMS facilities, uh, public health, so if it's anticipated reduction in emissions, whether it's active transportation like bicycle pedestrian transit, proximity to medical facilities, system preservation or state of good repair, making sure we're taking care of what we got, uh, whether it relates to pavement or bridges or even critical vulnerable transportation assets, which are those that are being identified by the Atlanta Regional Commission as part of a separate resilience plan based on, uh, high flooding and heat prevalent areas. Regional impact, so whether or not projects will benefit multiple jurisdictions, um, as well as improved access to environmental justice communities, which are low income, minority, elderly and disabled, hand or disabled. Um, project readiness, so how easy it is to implement, so if there's some low hanging fruit out there, if they've already been through preliminary engineering, um, or right of way, um, so taking that into account. Economic impacts, looking at the return on investment, freight volumes and proximity to activity centers. Mobility options and access, so looking at, uh, new modes that are being developed as a result, uh, or improving existing modes of travel. And then last but not least, connectivity and reliability, congestion relief and/or improved connection regardless of mode. So we're developing waiting scenarios based on the feedback we've received as well as what we're getting through the online survey. We've got a couple of hundred folks, um, with the online survey and hard copies so far, uh, potentially more so it's growing. And then, once we get all that feedback, we're gonna slice and dice it up by city as well as by, um, you know, PMT, stakeholder, et cetera, and come up with, um, a hybrid scenario. We'll then populate, okay, we'll then populate the metrics, uh, for each project and come up with a score, um, to rank and prioritize the project. So ultimately, we'll have a master list of projects for the whole Southern Fulton region and then we'll also have a prioritized list based on what you value in your, in your city by city. Okay? Um, yes? Oh, okay. Uh, so the next steps are to refine the vision, uh, the goals and objectives and the waiting scenarios based on the feedback and I believe, oh, there we go.
Y'all are moving.
I'm trying to do it in the middle.
Any questions?
Yes, um, I'm on the queue.
Yes, you do.
Um, I'm on the queue. Uh, can you get the dates for the, um, meetings, the public meetings to us as soon as possible because we have an economic development meeting that we're about to do. We, we got a lot of meetings coming up.
I got a lot of meetings.
And we, what we wanna do is, is, you know, make sure we get all the information to our residents, because what we don't want the residents to do is not show up to these meetings because, um, there are too many meetings. So we need to try to group, group them together as much as, I know Ms. Inga would like to have our own thing independently, but I'm sorry, our residents cannot, we cannot do this to residents. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I think we're open to piggybacking our opportunities. So, yeah.
Mr. Curry.
Um, what is the plan for our bus stops? When, when, when might we see a change?
So, um, okay, so I'm trying to give you the short answer to that. So we are in the beginning of the study looking at the inventory and doing an assessment of what the needs are. But what I can tell you is, um, just from looking around the area, there's definitely a lack of bus stop amenities. Um, and we've also been talking to MARTA about their bus shelter program and recognize that they plan on, um, putting out five thousand new bus shelters in the next five years, a thousand each year. And so we've been talking to them about what is required to kinda get on that list because they don't really have a defined list yet. Um, so we're gonna be looking at that and that includes ADA accessibility and stuff like that. And so we're gonna be looking at that as part of our analysis so that we can help give them a list of potential, um, shelters. Um, and then we'll also be looking at sidewalks and ADA accessibility, et cetera, and just other amenities, whether they're technology related or not, and then also looking at station area planning and stuff like that. So we are looking at that. We'll have preliminary recommendations, um, in the spring. Um, and then, you know, if they get into the prioritized list, then it just matters, it's a matter of how quickly it takes to get those implemented and refunded.
Um, I would ask just that the top of your list be fifty-four forty Fulton Industrial Boulevard. That is our city hall. We don't have a, we don't have a bench. We don't have a trash can. There's a trash bag hanging on one of our sides. So that'd be the end.
Yeah, that was, uh, one of the, honestly, I've done a lot of driving around here. I, I work downtown Atlanta, but a lot of driving around here and that's the first thing I notice is the bus stop amenities are really lacking, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I'm making notes of that.
Any further comments? It's being, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Next item is council discussion on resolution of forming a South Fulton Convention and District Bureau, Councilmember Willis.
So I don't know if you all recall, but, um, this is something that I requested that we set up, uh, when we were going through the, before we were going through legislative process, um, uh, for the hotel motel tax. Uh, most cities have DMOs and, um, DMOs are used to, uh, promote the city, bring trade show, bring trade shows, uh, also bring conventions and basically attract tourists and advertise their city. Um, in College Park, they have, uh, Airport West Chambers pretty much operating their DMO and I have done, uh, a lot of research on this and I think it's best for the city of South Fulton to create their own, uh, so what, what we're gonna call South Fulton Commission and District Bureau so that we can have our own autonomy, uh, instead of joining in with other cities. College Park, Hayville, East Point, and I think it's one other city, they all pay into one DMO and contribute, um, and that's what they use to promote their, uh, cities. Union City, uh, I'm not sure what they pay into, but with the city of this size, I think that we should create our own and, and this is just a proposal, so I guess if you all have any questions, if you all read this, um, I will entertain you at this time and Mr. Fine Guy, I've worked with him on this as well, so he will be willing to answer any questions.
Are there any questions at this time? Turn nine, last question.
Next item is the chief finance officer presenting the twenty eighteen audit report.
Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Councilmembers. We have our external auditors with us that are going to present our twenty twenty audit report. Mr. Moses.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is Doug Moses, I'm partnered with Marlon Jenkins and I'll be here to present the twenty eighteen results. Hopefully you've received the financial statements, the audits, discussion and analysis and management letter. Uh, I'm just gonna kinda touch on some of the highlights in this presentation. If you have any questions as I'm going through, uh, please stop me and I'll address them at that time. Uh, just a quick update, update about Marlon Jenkins, you know, we added our eighth office, um, in Savannah, Georgia. So we happily have that addition, we're four offices now in Georgia. Our governmental practice still continues to be one of the largest niches in the firm, representing about twenty-eight percent of the firm's practice. Uh, we audit over four hundred government clients in the southeast. That includes about a hundred and fifteen cities as well as a hundred and fifteen of those government clients received a GFOA award in excellence and financial supportings. Uh, my understanding that the city may be looking to do a caper next year and participate in that award program. So we look forward to working with the city, uh, in terms of, uh, applying for that award for twenty nineteen. Again, I was the partner responsible for the overall audit engagement with twenty years of experience. Uh, James was the audit service partner with sixteen years of experience. Uh, now on here is David Earl. Uh, he was new as far as providing the quality assurance, partnered with you, uh, with over fourteen years of experience and all of us spend one hundred percent of our time doing government audits and now voted some other industries that we serve and other services that we provide other than your traditional accounting and, uh, traditional tax services. As far as financial statements, the financial statements are the responsibility of the mayor, the city council, the management. Our responsibility as your external independent auditor is to give an opinion on those financial statements. We've issued an unmontified opinion, which is a clean opinion, which is what you will hope to get from the external independent auditor. Um, as you can see, the audit report date was as of June twenty-four, twenty nineteen for this year twenty eighteen, uh, financial statements audit, uh, which means that the city did not meet the March thirty-first deadline and I, I'll get into that a little later when I talk about the findings, which led to the delay of the audit. Uh, we did have four findings, um, title here, instead of being two instances of non-compliance, it was one instance of non-compliance, which is combined with one of the financial statements findings. So again, four findings and we'll talk about that a little later. Um, main thing here, I just wanna point out is, um, there were no significant new policies implemented during this year twenty eighteen. As far as management's judgments and accounting estimates, um, we did evaluate the estimates, um, that management, uh, came up with that affected like accounts receivables and dealing with allowances as well as depreciation in stance for capital assets. We did look at those estimates and deemed those estimates were, uh, reasonable. As far as our relationship with management, we received full cooperation from management staff and others. There were no disagreements with management on accounting issues or unreported, uh, matters. As far as audit adjustments, we did propose, uh, several audit adjustments, um, that are reflected, reflected in your financial statements and, uh, some of those adjustments did result in findings and we'll talk about that a little later as well. As far as our independence, we are independent of the city of South Fulton and its financial processes. Uh, there were no, um, fees paid to Marlon Jenkins for any type of management advisory services, which would have impacted our independence as your external independent auditor. All right, the next few slides are gonna go with some financial trends. Uh, before I talk about, uh, the fund balance, um, comparison to expenditures, um, looking at your government wide financial statements from, from that perspective, again, you don't have any proprietary funds at this time or business activities, uh, you just have governmental funds. And so looking at your, um, your governmental activities, net position on a full crew basis, which supports your capital assets and any, uh, long-term debt, uh, your net position went from a negative roughly five point nine million, uh, million dollars in the prior year as of June, um, September thirty, year twenty seventeen, to a positive net position of five point two million dollars. Okay? That's an increase of about eleven million dollars and that's due to you all giving the infrastructure and capital assets in Fulton County. That was re, uh, reflecting in your financial statements at a government wide level as capital contributions. So you didn't get cash, but in, in order to recognize those assets in your financial statements, um, that resulted in your net position increasing at a government wide level. So if you look at the different categories of net position for your governmental activities at a government wide level, you had about thirteen million dollars invested in capital assets related to that infrastructure that came over from Fulton County. You had about fifty-one thousand dollars restricted for, um, hospitality and tourism. And then you had about seven point nine million dollars unrestricted deficit, okay, uh, at the government wide level. So again, just wanted to point that out to you and looking at, um, the citywide financial statements at the government wide level. But looking at your fund balance for your general fund, which is your main operating fund, um, this slide here is looking at some of the other newly incorporated cities with September thirty year end. Um, you can see how you all have done it compared to some of these other cities. Uh, last year, when looking at your fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, uh, it's about a negative thirty-six percent and for year two, it went up to a negative sixteen point nine percent. And based on year three, um, the budget amounts that has been presented for twenty nineteen, you are looking to be right under twenty percent positive. A good rule of thumb is to have anywhere from two to three months reserve, that's about sixteen to twenty-five percent. And so it looks like you guys are, are working towards that goal in the year future. Your, your fund balance for your general fund at nine thirty twenty seventeen was a deficit of six point five million. Um, for nine thirty twenty eighteen is a deficit of eight point seven million dollars, uh, which is an increase of two point two million dollars for that deficit in fund balance. Uh, next slide looks at the, um, newly incorporated cities with December year ends. And again, uh, cities and other local governments with December year end, normally a city pretty, pretty healthy at year end. They collect the majority of their taxes, which will be used, um, to cover operations in the next calendar year. Like for you all at year end at nine thirty twenty eighteen, you had about twenty-eight million dollars in property taxes receivable. All of that was deferred because it's, it's supposed to be used for this year twenty nineteen. So if you look in your financial statements, you'll see your assets, part of your assets, you have about twenty-eight million dollars in property taxes, but all of that is deferred because it has to be used for operations between the nine and twenty. Um, and here are some cities with June thirty year ends, newly incorporated cities, you can see how their ratio, um, paired out in their first years of operations as well. Uh, looking at the general fund, um, revenues as of September thirty twenty eighteen, uh, your total revenues were fifty point two million dollars compared to eleven point six million dollars in the prior year, again, out the short period, a little over four months, five months in twenty seventeen. Um, so your largest revenue as of nine thirty twenty eighteen was sales taxes of twenty-four point six million dollars. That's forty-nine percent of the total revenues, uh, compared to prior year, sales taxes of nine point seven million. And then your next largest revenue source was fifteen point five billion in property taxes. And again, uh, this year's the first year you, you reflected property taxes in your financial statements especially. So you have a thirty-eight point six million dollar increase in revenues or a thirty-three hundred and thirty-five percent increase from prior year. Uh, expenditures, uh, total expenditures as of twenty eighteen was fifty-one point three million compared to eighteen point one million in the prior year, it's a forty point two million dollar increase or roughly two hundred and twenty-two, uh, percent increase over the prior year. So of course, as you all mentioned earlier, one of the largest expenditures is public safety, um, which was about thirty, thirty-one point one million dollars, which represents sixty-one percent of the total and that compares to twelve point one million dollars in the prior period. Your next largest, uh, expenditure was in public works, uh, about seven point four million dollars, uh, compared to one point eight million dollars in the prior period. That's about fourteen percent of the total. All right? Any questions on the financial trends? All right, we had four findings, um, and two- All right, we had four findings and two are repeat from the prior year. You asked me, is this unusual? No, it's not. For a new city that's bringing on a lot of services from the county, infrastructure and things of that nature, going to have some of these hiccups. Did have some turnover, did some positions in the finance department with those individuals being responsible for the year-end closeout procedures that left shortly after September 30, 2018. So that right now, I think you all are fully staffed in the accounting department. So I don't see some of these issues popping up next year. But we did have issues with, again, segregation of duties where during our testing of dispersals, we noticed where department heads could create their own purchase order or purchase requests without being approved by another individual. So we recommend that any purchase orders be approved by someone other than within that department, like the city manager or CFO. Also relating to our payroll walkthrough procedures, we noticed where payroll change forms were not being able to be signed off by the CFO as well. So we'll make sure that any, anyone that is requesting or having a pay rate change in each, that form needs to be signed by the employee, the department head, and city manager, and or the CFO. And also, as far as you'll see, where the city has responded to the findings based on their creative action plan to resolve those issues going forward. Now, you still might see this as a repeat next year because the policy wasn't implemented until a little few months ago. So we may run into some testing for fiscal year 2019 at the beginning of that period where we may have some issues like this. Again, though, in our testing, that may result in a finding for next year. Capital asset reporting. This was where we had to propose about $9.9 million of adjustments to ensure that the capital assets were reported correctly. When the city took over some of the infrastructure from the county, they reported the assets at the fair market value. Now, if you're receiving donations from like a developer, another third party, yes, that's supposed to be reported at the fair market value. When you have capital assets being transferred over from another government or you're taking over services, that has to be recorded at the net book value or carrying value reported by that instance of that government. And so we had to work with the city of South Fulton to get information from the county, which we ran into some problems in getting that information. So we had to do an alternative procedure as far as coming up with an estimated carrying value of those assets that were transferred over. So that resulted in the delay of the audit. As the city had to work to get that information for us to look at and test. Also, we noticed that some of the capital assets that were recorded as additions were under the city's capitalization policy thresholds. So we had to remove those assets. And then we also noticed where you had errors in the calculation of depreciation in the part in spans within the Excel document. And a lot of times, we do see that when capital asset details are maintained in an Excel document. The city does have a capital assets office system that will be uploading that information into. So hopefully going forward, we won't have that issue. So again, that resulted in about $9.9 million of adjustments to capital assets as of September 30, 2018. And I think the city has a response to that finding that will hopefully eliminate that from repeating for next year. Third finding deals with the hotel, hotel revenues and expenditures. And this is also a compliance finding as well. We noted where the city had reported about $51,000 as a liability in expenditures as of September 30, 2018. Upon further review, those expenditures were incurred subsequent to year end. She had not been reported as a liability. So we made entries to remove the liability expenditures, which resulted in the $51,000 revenues being restricted in fund balance. And according to state law, we have to spend a certain percentage of those revenues to go towards tourism, activities, promotion of tourism, things of that nature. And the city cannot have been, and deemed as of 9/30, 2018. So that resulted in compliance findings. So you see the response that city management has in order for you all to establish, identify qualified programs to spend that money going forward. Last finding, this is a repeat from the prior year. We had to make about $1.6 million of adjustments to receivables to ensure that the receivables were correctly within the funds. Within the general fund, we'll then be multiple grant on as well. And so that's it as far as findings. We have four findings this year, nothing unusual. This is kind of what's expected for newly incorporated city taking on services and capital assets from the government. We had four management points this year versus seven management points last year. The first one deals with dispersal approvals. We noticed where we tested about 25 expenditures. Noticed that three of the invoices were not approved or did not have purchase orders associated with them. Wasn't approved within the system or mainly approved by staff, or I'm sorry, by staff or signature. So we need to make sure that all the expenditures are approved accordingly. We noticed that six instances where the city could not provide any evidence of a tool for recurring expenditures such as utility dividends, bills, and things of that nature. So again, all invoices, all expenditures must be approved in accordance with the city's policy. P-card transactions, this is what can, you know, put governments in the news where people can mishandle, misuse P-card transactions. We did notice or looked at eight transactions pertaining to P-cards. And two out of the eight transactions were missing even indication of being approved or reviewed by anyone. It's easy to have, you know, some people purchase things, but you still have to fill out a requisition before using the P-card transaction. It's the sound controls that should be in place. Policy adoption, this is a repeat from last year. You had, we had five items where you all should consider implementing a policy for. You did implement policies for compensated absences, purchases, purchasing credit card and capital assets. The last one that needed to be implemented was for record retention. So we recommend that we get that policy approved, which is what we're not already done. And then the last one is recommendation that we're putting for all of our clients relating to cybersecurity risks. As you heard, a lot of local governments have been hit with ransom now. Had a client, we had a client that they actually had to pay ransom for about $1,000 because of the hackers came in and locked the system down to get it to receive an E91 white card. And so it's very important to look at your IT framework. But you all have an IT framework. You do have monitoring in place. I just need to make sure that you add the cybersecurity monitoring component to that and make sure it's taken very importantly. Did talk with the IT person here. He is proposing a new position for cybersecurity, which is awesome. We'll be approving that in fiscal year 2020 budget. But again, that's very important as a lot of governments have been hit with cybersecurity. And then real quick, a couple of new standards that I just wanted to mention. Statement number 87 deals with leases. It's a deal applicable for you all in fiscal year 2021, I believe, which is gonna result in a lot of governments recording what they normally would have as operating leases. They're gonna be reflected as capital leases. We have to recognize the capital assets as well as the liability in the financial statement. So we do, it's really gonna see a lot of governments showing more capital leases versus operating leases in the past. And then the last thing that I want to mention to you is statement number 88 that deals with certain exposures related to debt. Where in the footnotes, you're gonna have to separate the debt out between direct borrowings and direct placements. Also, if you had any line of credits that you didn't use the line of credit during the year, you have to report that unused balance as of year end as well. So this is deals with putting up disclosures pertaining to debt. Currently, you all do not have any long-term debt. On long-term debt, you have potential compensated absences and pollution remediation, remediation liability. You do have a short-term note with a tax anticipation note. But again, you don't have any revenue bonds, things of that nature. But if you enter into a revenue bond and things of that nature, then you have followed the standard in the current year that we're in, fiscal year 2019. And we continue to offer free continuing education classes to our clients where they can earn $28 CPE credit throughout the year. And your staff, your management has participated in those classes. Again, it's free of charge and it's been a big hit for our clients. You can see various topics that we provide on an annual basis, four times a year. So if anybody wants to be added to that list, just let me know and we'll get you on the invite list. So that concludes my presentation. It's an honor to present to you all. I'm not gonna address any questions at this time.
Thank you, colleagues. I think what we can do is entertain questions a lot more till this family and our board session. And come back after a short break. Is that okay with everybody? Okay. All right, Mr. Colley. Of course, I just lost. I just lost my place. Can Dr. Rau go?
Sure can, Dr. Rau. I'm just fleeting, I just grabbed a few bags.
So I've looked at a number of the findings that you have been applying in your audit. I want to know in terms of our internal process, we can address this. Where are we with our policies and procedures across all of those, all these years to have a comprehensive set of policies in the last?
So all the rights up, we have addressed them. If you see the rights up, they have got response, it's one of those ones. What still stands is the retention, retention policy. And retention policy, I think we had one from the attorney that was adopted from the state until we have our own. So we are working on the retention policy. But so I think we have said, one suggested by that one to use it from the state. And that's not one day for finances, all throughout differently, including the management, the club, which is just comprehensive retention for our city.
Because I have not seen the process that I'm aware of, that it's ready to be put into.
So when you say that, are you just referencing legislation that has passed by council? I'm talking about in terms of your internal, so that all your employees know with the policy that you have set of those policies.
So we have set up those ones and we are having the standardized operating procedures as well, putting them in place one by one. So we have internal controls and all of the four rights up have been addressed and ready to be announced.
So with that document, December, so what we saw come forth from like HR and all this?
Yes.
I have to call council on the road.
Where is the record in, where is the record in retention policy? I submitted that months ago in the legislative process. And I have to honestly give Mr. Pascal credit and also Ms. Sharon credit as well because they have consistently reminded me that we were gonna get dinged again on this audit if we did not get that policy on the agenda. That's the question for the person who has the list. I mean, that would be you because I submitted it months ago.
Yeah, it's, can I get the legislation process? I can put it on at the next agenda.
But I don't understand why it wasn't on the agenda in the first place. I submitted it months ago.
From this meeting?
No, I submitted it months ago, so it should have been on some meetings. Mr. Pascal, where are you?
With me here this evening.
Okay, I thought you typically.
Mr. Colley, are you, did you?
Yeah, I did find it, but I just go ahead. The first thing I want to do, sort of piggyback off of, Dr. Rau, the procedure that I'm most interested in is the, is the requisition to reimbursement procedure, which in my two years, I felt like has changed a couple of times. Do you all ever make recommendations for what procedure we should use?
Yes, I can give you an example of what some of my other clients do. For instance, a particular city in Metro Atlanta that will allow the CFO or the finance to allow the city manager to approve any purchase orders that's $10,000 in the world. Anything above $10,000 has to be approved by the mayor's and council. I've seen where.
And I'm sorry, I don't, I don't just, I don't wanna cut you off, but we're short on time. So I'm not asking, number one, I'm not asking specifically about that. I'm talking about, yes, can you make recommendations? I'm not talking about our purchasing policy. I'm not talking about large requisitions like that. But in terms of like, if I use the P-card, how, like, how quickly should that be processed? Or if I need a check request to pay a vendor, you know, should I be able to get that check request back in five days, in 20 days? And like, how many steps should that go through? I, we, I've been sort of asking for a flow chart of that process and we don't have one, and so sometimes it's just unclear. I'm also going to use this moment to just say again that I hate Edmunds. And when, and when our requisitions get denied, we don't know until the day of the checks, that we don't have a check. I would like to see some sort of recommendation about that. The next thing that I wanted to go back to is page 14, or slide 14. You talked about our capital asset reporting. You said that some of the donated lands weren't properly valued. There were some depreciation issues, some errors in the schedule, and some of the, that assets were incorrectly capitalized. I'm wondering, are you saying that we paid too much for some of the things that we got? Or how does that affect our balance? What is all of that?
Okay, so basically, you know, you took over services from the county. Along with that, they turned over the infrastructure pertaining to those services. So you have to, whatever you paid for, you can't report it at that fair market value. It has to be a carrying value from that government at the acquisition date. And so it's not that you overpaid for anything. It's just, you know, following generally a separate accounting principles, you have to report at the minimum value of that government that transferred over to. So it wasn't like you all overpaid for something.
So does that affect our bottom line, our finances in any way?
Uh, actually, no. It actually made, like I mentioned earlier, when you look at your financial statements, the first set of statements on page 14, I think, is the government-wide financial statements. You know, you recognized $13 million of capital contributions that you didn't receive cash per se. So that's, that's where they turned over the infrastructure and all that for you all, to you all with this transition. And so it actually made your bottom line at the government-wide level was pretty good because you had a deficit of $5 million in the prior year. This is in your financial statements. And now you have a positive net position of $5 million.
All right. Okay, uh, you guys probably should.
Oh, I, I'm gonna be quiet.
Okay, where's the gun?
Thankfully, Councilman Colley.
Where's the gun, you?
Councilman Colley took care of it.
Okay, Mr. Colley.
What impact? And, and, and not only what impact, but how detrimental was it that A, the department was not fully staffed? I understand that it's unprecedented now. That's number one. And number two is Edmunds because we know that he still has not put the resources and to get, to enhance our technology. And so I'm assuming not having a policy manual of any kind that there's a lot of manual activity on. So could you speak to those?
Yes. So first, you had two individuals in the first year that we did the audit, which was 2017, that were involved. Millie, and then also you had consultant Steve Garble, who played a crucial part in helping the city get ready during the year-end closeout procedures. Millie left when, in November of last year, right after year-end. And I think Steve Garble was involved a little bit, but not, not a whole lot. So those two individuals were gone. And so it was left to whoever was remaining to try to work through. And they did the best that they could. And so now you have some very qualified people on board along with the existing staff. So I don't see any issues going forward.
So I don't see any issues going forward. As far as the system, you know, you want to make sure you 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 enhance the system as much as possible to be able to allow it to be efficient. Uh, I don't know where y'all are at at this moment as far as making sure all enhancements are done. But uh I I will say it's top priority to make sure that you're able to utilize that system to the fullest versus having to do things manually if that's the case. Okay, so the fixed assets um module has been implemented now. So that that can be used going forward to take care of this issue.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Colley. Um, one of the things that the tax law, Mr. Colley, I understand that so much of what that was having to approach the right supplies.
Right.
I mean, I hate to say the word. But uh I want to know now, uh do we have those people? Do you feel that we have those people in those positions?
Yes, uh I'll just point out, Nina Mallard has joined the team.
Nina Robinson.
Oh, sorry. But I I I work with her at City College Park. She was crucial in helping the city get called up when she went back to them. Um, two, they were two years behind, but she got them called up. Uh, devil for her at Fulton County Board of Education, she did a great job there. So she's on board here, I'm glad to see her here. And so I of course see no issues going forward. And you have other individuals are within this uh accounting department from other entities as well. Uh, so you have a diverse group of individuals that pull their talents together, I believe. That's going to be great for the city.
I think that's really good. But I just want you to, from your perspective and reading that, uh, will we, do we have more or will we all write where we are?
I think you're good in the finance department.
Thank you, thank you so much for saying that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Y. Jordan.
I think that's really, really good. I I was a little concerned that after I read the the audit report.
Can you?
I was a little concerned in the beginning, but after I read the audit report, I I sort of saw how a lot of things happened. And but I know that a lot of things have been put as well. And and really, I um, I still would like to give uh kudos to the department because we started out with nothing. So I'll never forget that. And we really, really come a long way, a long way to go. But we come in and move back. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gunn. They just like you being on the. Are they interested? Why don't we take our break down and come back and start and resume with the budget? Okay?
So we're doing this actually later because we got a lot, we got to. After, later.
May, may, we stand up to entertain, are you just taking a break? Do not, okay, do not.
No. I didn't take the motion on the thesis. Probably move to the second discussion. All of the.